Here.
Bailey here. Kenzie.
Here.
Rod here. I'm here. Goals and certification in the meeting, Dr. Allen?
Yes, sir.
For a special allegiance.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for recommitment, state. I will. The Mount Borup Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, we're gonna move seven A's up after the student spotlight from three. Would that change what I have in motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of March 18th, regular minutes. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Question board. Okay, we have student spotlight. Tessa.
Tessa Sophie, right? Tessa, would you come up with me? So, Tessa is one of our fifth grade students in Mrs. Thompson's class. And she is not only a strong academic student, but she is also a super kind and thoughtful student of other classmates. So, Mrs. Thompson says she's a hard worker, and she gives her best when it comes to schoolwork, but she's also a leader in the classroom. So throughout the year, she was a buddy to two new students who joined the class. She welcomed them, made sure they had someone to play with, made sure they had a partner in the classroom to work with, and just helped make them feel welcome in the classroom. And at the beginning of the school year, when we reviewed the three Rs at the IC, this year we talked about, why do we focus on the respectful, responsible, and right? Well, it's because those characteristics reflect our community values. And in our community in Mount Borup, we care about how we treat others and have them be a part of our group. And so, Tessa embodies the value of taking care of others and welcoming new students to her class. So she is a student who is very deserving of the student spotlight tonight.
Wonderful. Yes. Can we, would you be willing to tell us a little bit about these wonderful people who came out to support you tonight?
Well, my grandma and grandpa came.
Hi, Grandma and Grandpa.
With my cousin.
Hi.
Fourth grader, right? Mm-hmm.
My dad is third grade.
Well, so glad you're here.
And my mom is fourth grade.
So glad you're here. We have this beautiful certificate to commemorate this very special occasion, and we hope that you will put that in a prominent spot within your house so you can reflect fondly on all the great things that you've done. Would you be willing to take a picture with all of us? So that way, we can put it up on our district's webpage and showcase you and all the wonderful things you do to make it special to be a Viking? What do you say we come over here? And, Mom, Dad, family, come on over, join us. And our intermediate center contact, Diana, is out, but Mr. President, you need to... This level here. Everyone in?
Yeah.
On three, we'll say Vikings? Oh, you mean...
One, two, three.
Vikings!
Okay, and then we have breakfast. And, one, two, three.
Vikings!
And, or just one good night.
Oh.
One, two, three.
Vikings!
Perfect.
You have to be excellent, Lord, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thanks for helping.
For you? For you. It's for you.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Next on the agenda is seventh A, DECA International Career Development Council.
We're so thankful to have Ms. Faber here tonight. I just got done learning that Joey, after teaching a long day, has been coaching middle school track. And then you're here, look at you! Yeah, you've got your running shoes on, your... Thank you for all you're doing. Now, here's you guys, are you thinking about going to Orlando?
Yeah, hopefully. So just to kind of start off, I'm Emma Thompson, and I am our DECA chapter president.
And I'm Molly Boyer. I'm the membership development officer.
Okay, so recently, we went to state to compete for Orlando. And Molly's gonna tell you a little bit about the process of going to districts that led to state and all of that. And so, yeah.
So our district competition started in January, and we took around sixty competitors. There's about six hundred, I believe, in the Dane County area that competed that competition. And to make it from districts to state, you have to be one of the top in your school. So we had twenty-one advance onto the state competition, which was in March. And there were about fourteen hundred from Wisconsin at that competition. And like I said, we had twenty-one competing there. And to make it to internationals, you have to be top six in your event to advance to Orlando. And Emma will talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so we actually had quite a few people that did projects this year, including Molly and myself, as well as people who did role plays, which Inez and Ally will also tell you guys about in a little bit. So in Orlando, we plan to present these against, oh my gosh, I think one hundred and twenty thousand other people. And so, this is people from all their states and even other countries such as Guam and Canada. And so, we are really looking forward to this, not only because it helps bring us closer together as a chapter, but it's an amazing learning experience for these students as they get to meet other schools and just have a better understanding for the business world. So for myself, I am taking an encouraging entrepreneurship promotion project. And so, we did a lot of this with the community, with our haunted house, as well as our bunny holes in the past and Princess for a Day. And so with that, we just kind of talked about how entrepreneurship is so beneficial to the community, especially Mount Borup, since it's such a small business community. So I did that with Sydney Flaherty and Mariah Lazar.
We also have Quinn Lightfoot taking her gold chapter project. So she goes through a number of events that we put on in the year. And the way that this project is laid out is sort of scrapbook format. So she goes through and lists all the events that we do, and then she doesn't actually present this to a judge. She's given the opportunity to go to a conference with a lot of other members that did similar projects. Our final project is one that I put together with Kate Geisler, and this is a learn and earn project. So we took one of the events that we did in the year, in this case, the haunted house. And we go through every aspect of the event, all the planning and the... And then we talk about the learning outcome and the earning outcome. So how much money we raise and what our members take away from doing this event.
Okay, so now I take Ally and Inez and tell you guys a little bit about these other competitors who are going.
Hi, I'm Ina Gil, and I competed at state's DECA competition this past March.
Oh, I'm Ally Gudrun, and I also competed at DECA in March.
As Emma said earlier, the other way that you can compete at competition is through your role plays and your tests. So basically, your test just gives you the opportunity to use some of your broader knowledge about the topic that you're focusing on. For example, me and Ally competed in business law and ethics, and we took a business management and administration test, which kind of just tests your overall knowledge of the subject. And then the role plays give you an opportunity to use what are called 21st century thinking skills, such as creativity, teamwork, just thinking on your feet, and problem solving, as well as they give you a case study in the moment where you're given a problem, and you have, at least for teams, you have thirty minutes to come up with a solution. And then you go into a judge, and you present your solution, and they ask you questions, and you just have to be ready to keep it moving and think on your feet. So as I said earlier, me and Ally qualified for business law and ethics team decision-making event. Other people who qualified for their role plays and their tests are Brandon Wilson and Grace Hamburg for their marketing management team decision-making event, as well as Tess Karin, who competed in principles of, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, hospitality management.
Yeah, so I think for me personally, the most important part of going to DECA, it's my first year, so I didn't really know what I was getting into. And I learned, I think, a week before district that we had to do a role play, and I didn't know what it was. But basically, you get this sheet of paper, and it's this whole story about how something is kind of going wrong for us with business law and ethics. Usually, the business made a somewhat questionable decision. There was some sort of repercussion for that. And we go through and discuss how, from a management standpoint, you can balance the needs of the business and the community and really bring everything together. I think I've learned a lot, just legally and figuring things out, just thinking on our feet and getting through those role plays. But the really nice thing about state is they have all people who are in business or people who have been in DECA for a whole bunch of years as the judges. And so, we had a fifteen-minute, twenty-minute decompression thing at the end. And they talk a lot about kind of the bigger trends they saw in the group. And that was actually where I think I learned the most this year about what people in the field think are gonna be relevant skills. And so that was really cool too. It was really valuable feedback.
So overall, we had quite a big success at state. We're taking more than we normally do to internationals, so we are taking eleven students total, hopefully. And we are just really happy to present this opportunity to you guys, and we hope that it gets approved. So thank you guys for listening.
I will just add one little quick thing, that Ms. Thompson will actually be the person who is chaperoning, and I will not be sadly. It's about eight hundred fifty dollars per student to go, and that includes the transportation, the hotel, and some activities that we will be doing. We are looking to get that cost down by funds from the district, from DUC, and also from travel sponsorship. So we're working toward that. I don't think it'll be eight hundred fifty, but that's what we're working toward right now. And again, it's sad that I'm not going.
Yeah.
What a poised group of young people who I know are... You guys haven't even left Mount Borup, and you've already made us proud. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your willingness to participate and represent us so well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And let your mom know that we've been thinking about... Yes, absolutely. You miss her around here.
Yeah, hoping she comes back next week.
She'll take her time.
Yeah.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like you guys are moving on.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Faber, for what you're doing to help pick up...
So if you want Ms. Thompson there.
All right. That is three A's.
Well, hello, it's been a while. So not much has gone on much at the high school since a lot of students just got back from spring break. And a lot of students, well, they took a little bit of an extended spring break. So, big changes that kind of went on is the... With construction, the whole Commons area is kind of taken out, so there's no longer a floor, which is very interesting to walk on, but still kind of cool to see the improvements. But then, the other big thing that's going on at the high school is this week is our band show. So Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights, we have all the band kids come together, and we do our big band show bash, which is really cool. And tickets are very slim for Friday night and Saturday night, but Thursday night is definitely tickets left. Not much is going on, but...
Can you tell everyone what you were doing this morning from about eight to eleven-thirty or so?
This morning, I'm grateful for the opportunity that I got to help out with some of the principal interviews. So I got to listen in on three candidates, and it was very interesting and very cool to get that experience and hopefully find a new principal.
Your perspective is so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
In addition to the opportunities that Kenzie spoke of, I'm excited to tell you about Alumni Endowment Group. You remember the class of 1959? They set aside a significant sum of money in order to help promote academic excellence, activities, dollars that could help be used by teachers to help enhance the experiences our kids have. And this year, the endowment has allocated twenty-eight hundred dollars for those kinds of activities. And we are going to be meeting tomorrow afternoon to review each of the grant applications. And then come Friday morning, we're gonna do some surprise visits to classrooms and award those grants. And so I'm excited about sharing that and check our Twitter feeds and Facebook feeds and social media and all. You can see we've got our awards. Coming up next week, next Tuesday night, as I remember right, Danny, our Reason to Live, the book review that we're doing as a community talk. Thank you for your help in putting that all together and getting word out. Still, copies of the book, if I understand it, are available at the local library. And that gets underway at what time?
Six-thirty.
Thirty at the library next Tuesday night. And then finally, this morning, I've sent out a message to all of our families with reference to a community engagement conversation we'd like to have, the board would like to have, along with a demonstration around this concept of school resource officers. Are we at a point in our community whether or not that's a likely next step for us as a school? We can't make those decisions in isolation of one another. We really need to be having the input of our community to set us on a course of success in the past, and we actually need to listen to their thoughts. And so in this very room, on April the 18th, it's a Thursday, evening six to about seven, seven-thirty or so, we will be here welcoming all feedback on that important topic. Mr. President?
Okay. Just some comments?
Jackie Dicker. Good evening. I talk loud. I'm the MEGF AA rep that's here at the meeting tonight. I just want to say thank you for all that you do. And I see some of you guys are running for reelection tomorrow. Is that what we call it, reelection?
Tomorrow.
So thank you for being willing to try it again. We really appreciate all the time that you spend here in meetings all the time. So thank you.
Number four, A, personnel training.
Motion approved.
Any questions or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion items, showcase intermediate center, Ms. Katie Augie.
Hello again.
I see you brought a friend along with you tonight.
Yes, Mrs. Geninnan. She tried to fight me for it, to do the presentation. I said, "No, it's mine." She was out of it.
You can go ahead and get started. Now pull up your...
Yeah, so while Steve's pulling up my slides, the first thing I wanted to start with is to... Before we jump into our specific school goals, in the fall, when our school report card data got released and the report cards across the county got released, one of the... I sorted through some of that data and looked to see how we were performing compared to some of our neighboring schools, as well as what our trends are. And so, that's what Steve is pulling up right now. One of the things that I saw when I laid out our performance amongst, compared to other schools, is we were in the top third of the county amongst some... In some really good company schools from elementary schools from Warren Hee, from Middleton, from Oregon, and from Sun Prairie. And so, I was really proud to see that we're, you know, right at the top of the pack there. And then I did also focus more on the rural and suburban schools as I thought that was a more fair comparison to our school district and our elementary school. But then, with data being more meaningful when we look at trends and we look at context, if we look at the next slide, I also looked at our trends across the five different areas of the school report card across the past seven years. And what stood out to me is just how consistently the IC has been showing stronger scores in the past three years in total scores and student achievement and closing gaps and on-track scores. And we see that school growth has been a little bit more stagnant, but that's been an area that we know that we need to work on, and so we'll continue the progress that way. But really, why I wanted to show this is I think it's really important to recognize the work the staff has been doing and to see the payoff and the benefit for students. I think of things like updating our curriculum, the work that Sarah Strach has been doing the past few years, increasing our systems of intervention, and using our data to make database decisions to student needs. So some really good progress there. So now we'll switch gears to our goals. As you may remember, the IC is piloting a new assessment, FastBridge Learning. It was developed at the University of Minnesota by a leading researcher. They have the goals of reducing the extensive lag time between research done at universities and application in classrooms, making it easier to collect and use data to improve student outcomes. And they just started in 2012, but schools across the country have been really quickly adopting it, and they're now in over more than forty states. So what we've been using it for is to do our computer adaptive reading and math assessments. That's pretty comparable to MAP. We've been using their oral reading fluency tool, as well as other progress monitoring tools. And so what we have found is it really is a very good tool, but we're in a... We're gonna do a two-year pilot, because we really want to make sure that it meets our needs and that it's something that would be a better solution than that, because we know that that also has been serving our district really well. The reason I mentioned this is that our goals are written pretty tightly to the MAP results. And so, where MAP breaks it out into different strands in literacy and math, so I won't be able to speak exactly to those, but else, we'll still be able to take a look at general progress. So if you remember, our literacy goal was regarding informational text. And if we look at the next slide, we can look at our winter to... Or fall to winter growth in A reading. So that's the computer adaptive reading assessment. And you can see that ninety percent of our students are performing within the average or better range. We've also seen some growth from fall to winter. And so this is a good indicator that our core instruction is working well in this area. The nice thing about this tool is that it also looks at not only where the students score, but also how they're growing from term to term. And again, we see that the majority of our students are making expected or better growth in these broad reading areas. Within this assessment suite is also the reading fluency tool. Oral reading fluency, despite its name, that it focuses on fluency, is the best overall indicator for broad reading skills. And this is where we see a little bit more opportunity for growth here. We have a little pocket of students who are not performing as well as they are on the broad reading. And so, it could be an area that we could impact student learning here. But still, seventy percent of students are performing average or better. And again, similar to that, we see that... This is, again, another opportunity where students... We could reach out to some more students to look at growth here to see if we could impact their overall reading. So if we look at an example of how we are supporting informational text within the classroom, here's a snapshot of our third grade professional learning communities. So they wanted, because the FastBridge assessment does not break out into specific strands, they used a curriculum-based assessment that focused on informational text, and they used that commonly across their classrooms. And so then they were able to bring those scores back and see what patterns arose. And what they found was that students were struggling the most with identifying the main idea compared to supporting details, being able to distinguish between the two, and then using text features to support their overall understanding. And so, they took that information, and they were able to use that to inform instruction to do some reteaching in that area and provide some additional practice. Our next tool for math focuses on operations and algebraic thinking. So what I can do is I can share our FastBridge data with you again. We see that overall, our students continue to perform strongly. We have eighty percent of students performing at the thirtieth percentile or higher. And then it also, we can look at growth rates that our students in math continue to... The majority of our students are growing well in this area. When we look at our action plan on the next slide, so to focus on operations and algebraic thinking, we have been doing some research related to fact fluency best practices. Anecdotally, our teachers see that the students who are struggling with their math bags are struggling in math overall, because at the upper elementary level, there's so much multi-digit computation. And so, they've been using classroom assessments to monitor fact development and differentiate strategies for students according to their need. Our school-level math team has also been investigating best practices and purchased a new text highlighted in that picture that was just published by ASCD that we'll use to further our understanding. And we're also have been looking at the different operational strategies teachers use across the grade levels and looking at the alignment there. And all of this has resulted in rich discussions with a new ability to consult with our math interventionist who joined us this year. And she's also taken the team to do a deep dive into the Common Core standards. If we look at the next slide, this is an example of the coherence map that they've been digging into, where you can see how one standard, how it relates off of earlier standards, and then how it sets the table for progress towards future standards. This one is the... Was the standard that focuses on using the four operations with whole numbers to solve problems. And so in future years, you can see how that impacts or is related to students' ability to multiply and divide fractions and understand what that... Those concepts mean, to understand ratio concepts and use those to solve problems, to add, subtract, multiply, divide rational numbers, and to represent and interpret data. And so, it's been helpful for teachers to see which are key standards that they really want to hit with students to set them up to be successful. Our third goal was about student well-being. And you'll remember that for the IC, our focus is to look at student connectedness as that's correlated with a number of protective factors as you grow up. And so, the really core action plan is to place at the very start of the year and have been following it and keeping these things in place and adding to it where we can. For example, we noticed a pattern with our health office visits that we have some frequent flyers, and we're able to track their data. And so, we were able to work with our school nurse and our student services team to see, is this really related to a health issue? Or is this maybe a way that students are accessing support they're not getting otherwise? Or it revealing an issue in the classroom that maybe they're struggling more with academics? And so, it's always looking for ways that we can continue to support students better. We are currently re-administering in our school connected a survey, and so we'll be able to look at results by the end of the month. And then I look forward to sharing those with you when we have that information. So in that, that is our mid-year update. Questions for me?
Want a couple little ones?
Sure.
You mentioned the FastBridge learning and the math.
So...
So you're getting both of them?
Well, kind of. So in our pilot, we didn't want to go jump from one completely to the other and then lose all of our data with math, or the trends students have. And so, what we've done is... And so what we've done is in third grade, we have had, we took, we had all of our third graders take the fall assessment because at the K through 2 level, they take the primary version, and there's a difference in our version. And so we wanted to make sure we had a baseline there with them. And then all students are going to take the MAP in the spring, so that we'll still have their spring to spring data in our pilot and still, and not lose that continually in MAP.
So does that mean FastBridge in the fall and MAP in the spring?
Just for the pilot, yep. So we did FastBridge in the fall and in the winter. We'll have it optional for some classes, or if teachers elect to take it again, so that we can look at the correlation between what they're scoring in FastBridge compared to MAP. When we, we did that in the fall with our third grade students, and there was a pretty strong correlation. I believe it was .8 or .85.
That's pretty strong.
Yep.
And my second one is I am totally fascinated by the recess before lunch.
Yeah.
Still going well, still having positive results?
Yeah, so we put the routine in place at the beginning of the year and have it, have had it in place ever since. We looked at, with my site council group, we recently looked at the data. I think we see again our health office visits less over the lunch hour because they're not scarfing their food down and then running outside to play at their hardest. We also see a few less behavioral issues at recess, but we see a few more, more of them are getting worked out in the lunchroom because they bring all of that energy from, from the playground into the lunchroom, but it's not been overwhelmingly problematic. It's just been a shift in the energy. And then I was talking with a student group that I was working with at lunch, and I asked them about it, and they're like, well, yeah, it just makes so much sense because then you're not rushing to eat your food and you're not rushing to get outside. And so, yeah, to them, it made a lot of sense, too.
And the transition then from lunch to their next class or activity, still going better than it was in the past from recess to those classes?
I, you know, I think if you were to talk with teachers, there's still a lot of that energy. They meet them when they dismiss them from the lunchroom and it's, you know, a fair amount of reminders and that kind of thing. Remember, we gotta quiet down the level zero to go into the, back to the classroom. But again, not anything problematic that are all that different from when they were coming in from recess. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other questions?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay. Referendum upstate, Dave Lee, Captain Lee, and the referee's lawyer. Good evening, everyone. All my cohorts down here, if I can get started, as you guys might.
Yeah.
There's a photograph of...
Arby's.
Arby's. It's sticking around here all the time. All right, so well, been a busy last couple of weeks. Last week itself was very busy. Couple other things that maybe aren't part of, are part of referendum, but aren't necessarily... Just at the high school, we did a lot of carpet work and paintwork in the middle school here, some front security entrance work last week. We did a bunch of the pavement, much like Kenzie told you, over the course of the week, they were, the pavement team was in to strip off all the tile in the, in the commons and a couple of other areas, and we got that all done so we can, Kramer can get a jump on the summer. As soon as school's on, they can start doing their magic inside the school. So here, as far as where we've been, I want to extend some gratitude to Hunter Housier, is his last name?
Housier.
Housier, excuse me. He's an engineer that works for Kramer, young man that just joined the team back in December, I think. He provides me with these pictures and these milestones and stuff, so I'm really grateful to him for keep attracting these things and doing the late work for me. Here, what you're seeing in here, the last slab on grade pore, the big pores, was done. So we have the commons area, it's completely cemented now. So all of the floors, just about everywhere, are cemented now. Some of you guys, we saw that actually last week when we went through the tour. And even since then, these have come a long way, the pillars are getting burnt up and things like that. Another picture here, you can see, this will be the entrance to our fab lab. There'll be some storefront glass that goes in there, a little small roof that covers that area. So that will be, I'm sure, something they'll be working on a little bit over the coming That's inside the fab lab. Notice the walls have all been block filled and primed. We've got some steel stud walls that have to go up to divide up this area and do the CAD lab, which would be to the, where the, the front of this room is, and then the fab lab where, where this lift is sitting currently. This is a block work that's been occurring in the commons area. The wood structure right there on the right will be the entrance into the, I believe, into our concession stand, our dedicated concession. Now, if you don't know, for years, we've been rolling the concession stand out of a closet and setting it up and trying to find plugins that would run the popcorn maker and the hot dog warmer and all those, the nacho dispenser. We'll have a dedicated space, not have all that stuff in there. The large opening that you see in front of you will be the entrance into the bathrooms for sporting events. And then the next framed opening there is a small storage space. And where the masons are working now will be our remote surgery. So again, this is a little bit, where we're at today is a little bit further along than that, but they're making some great progress inside the commons area. This is the stairway up into the ag storage area, the business ag storage, so they just poured that stair this week, I believe, a couple days ago. Yeah, maybe yesterday. At any rate, so we have access to that storage.
It goes all the way northbound down there.
It does. There's a, there's a, there's a large amount of overhead storage there. There's some more ductwork and things like that that have to get through. It'll be interesting to see what, what kind of actual space we have once all the HVAC work is done, but there's, there's quite a bit of space out there. This is the curtain wall that's on the south courtyard, so the big glass wall with the stairs on the other side of it. I think what we're showing here is the fact that we've got the metal paneling is going on. And if you've driven up on the building from the south, you can see that. It's a nice, it's beautiful stuff. It really looks good with the new brick against the, the old, the school, too. So it's, it's beautiful. That courtyard is really gonna be pretty impressive when it's all, it's all said and Some more of the siding from another perspective, and some storefront glass along the second It's the interior view of a math classroom. The ceilings, our ceiling grid is in, the lights are in, all the above ceiling work, or the vast majority of the above ceiling work is done. It's been painted. We're just waiting on some casework to show up, and that can get installed and then they can finish those rooms off. And this is outside the science classrooms on the second floor. If I'm not mistaken, they primed and painted some of the interior walls. I would assume that the hallway walls will be right behind that, so that second floor is really beginning to take shape and wrap up. This has been, this picture here is to show we've begun the polished concrete process. So it's starting down by the ag wing on the, area C as they call it, but down on the southern part of the addition, we've begun to do the polished concrete. And we've got all the, around, I think, all the, up to the steam commons, if I'm not mistaken in the last couple days. And we've got, this is just the grinding process, there's a grouting and a sealing process that have to occur on that to be finished. They're starting to make some connections to the old school. This is the end of the 300 wing, Penny Thompson's old classroom on the left, another math classroom on the right, and those are all being tore out and repurposed. They get this little, this great little machine. I had a couple, there was about three or four boys that were stuck to that glass, watching, watching him work this little backhoe, and they're like, dude. I was on the inside, talking, yeah, that's, that's just an Xbox controller. Really? No, no. But it's very close, and they were really eating that up. I said, there's a, there's a good opportunity there. So they'll make that, that connection here this week. I think they're gonna pour that ramp in, and that will be done. Perspective of the upper commons, the dense rock is on all around, the windows are framed out, the roof itself is watertight. I believe the standing seam metal is, has either arrived or will arrive shortly, and I believe that they want to get that stuff up on that roof as quickly as possible. And then the east view of that, of that same commons. I think that's the end of the video, George.
Those are great pictures.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hunter does a great job of kind of nailing them down. There's, there's so many other things that are going on, and it's, we could go on all day. Over the course of spring break, they took an opportunity to put some wing walls and some doorways in the, back by the auditorium. There will be a divider door for activities and then some places where lockers are gonna go. Kramer's done a real good job of finding that opportunity to get in there and get a little bit further, as the, when summer ends, we have less to do. So some of the milestones that we've reached in the last 30 days, we are watertight on all roofs, so all of the roofing is in, maybe 90 square feet over that fab lab, some small little portion of it that isn't done, but everywhere else, let it rain. It's all, we've got drains hooked up, you know, we're in good shape there. Slab on grade pores are all, are all done. They began polishing concrete in area C, ceiling grid on the second floor. Fireproofing is complete in the lower level in area A. The wall panel installation is going on, as the pictures have shown. Tile work in the bathrooms is ongoing and complete in the lower floors. All stairways are in and poured. Factory windows on the first and second floor are ongoing and have been, a lot of them have been installed already. Interior work in demo in area B over spring break, that's what that picture with the cool little backhoe was showing. Exterior framing in area A, which is the commons, is done. Some of our siding has began, and painting in the bathrooms is complete, and they are being in the shop areas. Those are things that we said we would get to over the last 30 days and have reached those milestones. In the next 30 days, we expect to begin the tarasol flooring. I don't precisely know exactly where that's gonna start, but I think in the commons.
Probably, I, I don't believe that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't exactly, but that, that process will begin, that's a long process. For all the area that we're getting tarasol put on, that's a long, long process. Lab casework will start to show up for math classrooms and all the science classrooms. We're gonna start digging the foundations for the new greenhouse down at the southern end of the building. Resident flooring will get installed, I think that goes in the kitchen, surgery, a number of classrooms, or the science classrooms and things like that upstairs. Fair enough partitions will begin going in, skylights will arrive, and we'll get those all installed. We'll have all the framing complete, the drywall done in the next 30 days. All the ceramic work will be done in the next 30 days. We've got a couple ships ladders that have to go in a couple places in the labs, and then one, one to access to the mechanical room from the kitchen area. Those will be in. Interior brick work, so one of the things that's not easy to see on here is that all of those columns in the cafeteria area all get a brick surrounding. I think they started, if I'm not mistaken, they started them yesterday. So every one of those gets a, a brick column all the way up to the ceiling. So there's a few that are shortened, a few that go up two stories. They'll begin doing the courtyard work, retaining walls, and then they will start doing a retaining wall that will house our dumpster enclosure, kind of right at the, at the parking lot and soccer field. So those all should be complete in the next 30 days and still on time.
And under budget.
And under budget, absolutely, absolutely. Right. Any questions about milestones and things like that?
We have been working on signage for the interior portion of the building as well. A team of staff and leaders has selected this as the interior signage that we would be working with. We figured that this would be important to also look at renumbering some classrooms at this time and have that reflected on our, on our blueprint. It, I don't know if you can make it out very well here, but this is a red, kind of a metallic backing, and then this would be an area where we could insert the professional's name as to who, who's in that room with a little slide in, slide out. At the same time, we intend to have directional signage as well. So auditorium in this direction, front office in this direction on a larger scale. We've taken a beat on deciding what to do with exterior signage, and so tonight, just as an informational kind of piece, since it's under the board's requisite $25,000, I just wanted you to know that we've awarded the interior signage out already and that the tab involving all of the bid information is included with your, with your board package. Kevin, how are you doing?
Good.
You're good?
Yep. So, yeah, the team's doing a great job, they're keeping me, keeping me up to date, and we've got a bunch of talented guys. One thing I want to share, we had 94 professionals on site today. I mean, that's, it keeps creeping up there, a few more every day, so I would expect that that number will stay steady for quite some time. So, you know, a lot of work gets done, 94 people working on it all day, every day. So it's exciting to see how fast things happen.
It does. I, I was out in the district all day today, so I'm really anxious to see, it changes so much every day. It's, it's pretty impressive to get in there every day and see what's...
Even Saturdays and Sundays, I saw some people...
Yep.
The day go, do they?
Indeed. Some people want to get in there and work when nobody else is around, and we're happy to let them do that, work with the school.
Thank you for what both of you are doing. Maybe if we could avail ourselves to questions, members of the board.
Great report. Great job. It's easy for me to just read off the things here.
Thank you to the both of you. Much appreciated. I'm your upward, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So I am presenting on the information advocacy report. This one is attached to goal, board goal number two, which goes back to well-being. And so the, kind of the board goal is the, what we provide is support systems for students and staff. Previously, earlier in the year, we looked at educators one and two, which really focused on the student demographics and some of the data around it. This one really focuses on academic, social, and emotional readiness levels. What are we doing to support the whole well-being of the kid? So this report is really about the whole child. What are we doing in student services-wise within each building to support that whole child perspective? And part of that also is looking at students with IP, students with 504 plans, students with disabilities, and how are we supporting them as well? And so I did do some enrollment information, so you had those, these are kind of the latest numbers. So within our district, 278 students with disabilities. It's a slight increase from previous years, but it's about 11.2% within our district. So, is that what that is? And then to really break it down even further, every disability category we had listed, so you can see the number of students that we have within each area. And so as you can see, we as a district have students in every disability category and are serving them throughout our district. Also, when you look at 504 data, you can see where the ELC and PC, we have no students with the 504. The IC has three, the middle school has 16, and then the high school has 22. So it kind of slowly increases as we go. One kind of information piece that we thought was really, you know, it says a lot about the district and our special ed programs in itself, is that we currently have 17 students from... from other districts who open and roll into our district. Well, we have four students with disabilities who open and roll into other districts. So it says a lot about our programs and it says a lot about the teachers and the work that they're doing every day to support kids. And so when we're really looking at addressing the academic, social and emotional readiness levels, just wanted to give kind of an overview, right? And so this is kind of a tiered, three-tiered model. And we're really in this report focusing on more tier two and tier three. Tier one is about the universal supports, right? What do we provide for everybody? What's core instruction, core curriculum that everybody has access to? Tier two is the small group, so more focused instruction, but more in the group level. Where tier three is more intensive, individualized focus and attention on specific skills and specific targets. And so in addition, you know, our student services team meets one-on-one with students. They meet with small groups. We have problem-solving teams that meet every week within every single building. We're doing academic interventions. And then we wrote some additional services that we provide that, of course, this is not an all-inclusive list, but then each one of these areas within each building, the different services that we provide. And so in your report, you have all of those levels at pre-K 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then the high school levels as well. Assume you don't want me to probably read through all of these, but these are just different curriculums that we're doing, different social, emotional needs. We looked at, you know, academic readiness, right? So are we helping them to prepare for academics? Socialness, friendships, groups that we're providing to help run, being social, being kind, and then emotional readiness. Are we doing groups for students who are struggling with anxiety, groups that are struggling, individuals that are struggling with some depression, stress, coping, all of those kind of self-care needs? It would also be easy to say that, you know, when you look at, you know, hierarchy of needs, if you're not emotionally ready, you can't be academic ready. And so we really need all three to really be there. So in a way, we could check every box for academic readiness in these sections. But this is just a sample of some of the great stuff that our schools are doing for kids every day.
How fortunate we are to have a continued partnership with Building Bridges. And that comes at some of our own resources. Thank you, board members, for allowing us to have that match on that grant. We're in year two of that grant. And we're eager to see how that data is helping us to better understand the impact we're having on kids. And it's a wraparound program, so how we help and support families as well. That coupled with Oregon Mental Health Services. I know I mentioned it to the board through my podcast, but maybe for the identification of the community, can you talk about the expansion of Oregon Mental Health that's been occurring?
Yeah, so right now, Oregon Mental Health is serving students in grade six through 12th grade. And they're, you know, the great stuff that they're doing is that they're coming in, they're providing therapy to students so that they don't have to go off campus, so they can get it on campus right in the school day. It saves on, you know, parents not having to transport, take off work, a lot of those areas. So they're coming in and directly giving support to students. We have had an increase in the number of students that need the service and want the service. And so we've added a third day onto our program, which is great that Oregon Mental Health has just kind of come in and just offered it. The thing with Oregon Mental Health is that you do have to have insurance to grab the service. And I think that our agreement was like...
10% against their book of business would allow for some sliding scale or fee, I believe.
Yeah, and they're above the 10. They're above what we had asked them to be at in our contract. So they're going above and beyond serving kids that don't have health insurance or have minimal coverage on it. And so it's been a great service to our district. And we continue our partnerships with Journey Mental Health and some programs and with the Grace Hospice. You know, it takes the community and it takes the village and it takes a lot of different supports to help service kids. And we have great resources and great connections and it's really appreciated.
Thank you for helping see to it that those kinds of interventions are occurring on top of all the other kinds of things you're doing to help support academic, social and emotional. And credit to your team too, your student services team, just top shelf. And we're so thankful for them and your leadership.
I have a question. There are four different curricula that are mentioned in here. Second Step, Social Thinking, Zones of Regulation and Council's Choice. Would it be possible to just give like a brief summary of what those are?
I can do some of them. And maybe with Sarah Toots. So the Second Step is really kind of the, that's the curriculum that our school counselors use, where they're going into the classrooms and providing that support for social, emotional problem solving, stress management, kind of a overall overarching on a lot of those areas. And so that would be, you know, kind of more of a tier one, but then they kind of get down deeper with kids as well as they go. So is that fair?
Yeah, I guess it's sort of the core, the anchor curriculum for social, emotional learning and some of the conflict resolution, like you said, and the choices and those kinds of things. We had it from 4K all the way up to 45.
Zones of Regulation is more of a teaching strategy that kind of breaks down different emotions into colors and say you have zones. And then you teach, if I'm in the red zone, so I'm angry, then here's some strategies that I can do to get out. And so it's an identification of where you're at. And so then with strategies on how to help, you know, not be in the red zone anymore. And so if you look at the, I think specifically at the PC, they've got pictures throughout the hallways of what different, each different zone looks like. And then what are some strategies and some resources to help, to help not be in the red zone or the yellow zone if you're feeling anxious or nervous? What were some of the other ones?
Council. I don't know.
Council's thinking, I think, was, was part of some of the guidance curriculum before Second Step. And so it's some of those problem-solving strategies like playground conflict. What could you do? Talking about like, you could go tell a teacher, you could find something else to do, you could walk away before you get into a fight, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you. So I have another question. So one of the things that actually, Steve, I think you had mentioned, you know, when we were really kind of initially right in the thick of things with, you know, trying to figure out what we can do to support kids so that they are less likely to get into crisis with regard to their mental health. And one of the things you had specifically mentioned was, are there opportunities or is there a curriculum that we might implement that would teach kids resilience? Is that anything we've looked at any further? It just, I, it's on my mind because it seems like we dealt tails with what you're talking about tonight.
Yeah, I think, you know, in general, you were looking at providing one more resource. So one more option that students have and adults have to, to have in their bank, right? So that they have one more thing that they have that they can pull from. And so looking at the work that the schools are doing and feeding for mindfulness, the wellness days that the high school is doing. Those are all specifically teaching kids some of those skills. When we're starting to do it through the safety grant as well, some of the work with the frontiers, they do some on resilience, but it's on bullying, friendship, being kind, some of those other components as well. So I think my, I know that we're kind of getting to some of that area, but I think the term, the resilience itself, we probably are continuing to work on additional skills.
There's not a lot of evidence-based research around the teaching of resiliency, what works best, because every circumstance that we're coming to read is different for every child. So it's hard to approach it from a one-size-fits-all. But it's a great topic for any one of the members of the senior leadership team to clean their doctorate in and write about. Just a thought. Case study.
What really, what a lot of the research says that we've been looked at is you just want to give one more resource, one more thing to put in people. When, you know, when stress levels get high, you want one more resource to be able to help support yourself or, you know, calm breath, deep breaths, all of those things. You just want one more. So how can we teach one more to keep, you know, put it in your bank?
Well done. Well done. Thank you.
Set of the D. Consideration of door lock hardware.
We're still very fortunate that we were able to leverage the dollars that were available, grant dollars that were available, to help with the safety grant that came out of the State Department of Justice. And so we have walked our campus to identify what our needs are. And we sent out a bid, got three bids, and what you see here tonight is the recommended bid company along with ancillary material to support that. If I can pull that up for you if you'd like. $260 some odd thousand, a little more than a quarter million dollars in grant money received. This, if I remember reading right, is about $29,000, $30,000.
$29,285.
Okay, $29,285. And this is really what we're looking at, push button, right?
Correct. The current doors require a key to lock them. So in a crisis situation, a staff member has to actually open the door and lock the lock, you know, and then push the door shut. And then we've got all sorts of rubber bands and things like that, the slide mechanisms that allow us to leave the doors in a locked position and the doors don't shut. So at any rate, so now anybody, that's the other part, if you have a key for that room, you can lock it. If you don't have a key for that room, you can't lock it. So at any rate, these keys or these locks will be locked by anybody. Any staff member can get in the room, push the button and it will lock. So they're taking motion effects, okay?
Motion approved.
Second.
And that's the bid of opening specialist.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of video surveillance bids. PC, ELC, IC.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. As you know, we've been able to install new video cameras and the associated software with that at the middle school. We're in the throes right now getting bid through Kramer Brothers on the high school's project. And so this is something completely different, not related to the referendum, but still same concept. Video cameras at the ELC, PC, IC that would come with the software for us to monitor that anywhere there's an internet connection, so even from home if I got a call as I do sometimes, that the alarm system is going off, I could go in and look at it rather than up to the schoolhouse. We could have, the police have access to it as is appropriate. And so you can see a wide range of bids for the same kind of work. We did provide a basis for what we wanted in our work. We walked the campus with our principals and staff members to identify where we wanted the camera's position. And so you can see we're recommending Bolttronics. Bolttronics is an outfit that has done a lot of work with a local hospital in Madison as well as the new safety building, if I remember right. So we're very pleased to partner with Bolttronics pending your approval this evening. Motion to approve.
Do the, will the cameras cover then everything, all the building grounds, parking lots, playgrounds?
Yeah, so it will, we can always add on, which is kind of nice with these camera systems, it's kind of a plug and play. As long as you have the wire in, then you can, if you find that it's not quite, the angle's not wide enough, for example, and you want to get a closer look at the playground, you want to get a closer look at the parking lot or down the hall, we can easily add if we have to. The cameras aren't what's expensive, we're finding out. It's the, it's the wiring is the humdinger. So, yeah, I think we're in a good spot.
May I ask a question? Can I ask a question?
She's asking, are you willing to accept audience questions right now or do you wish to wait to serve some freedom?
Is it pertaining to this subject?
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't know how to process one.
Thank you. We're so glad you're here. Good evening.
Okay, hi. I'm a parent from the ELC. So just wondering about this, some of the cameras go up. I was curious, who do you plan on monitoring them? Is there a staff member that would be monitoring them throughout the day or would you just review footage if there wasn't incident?
Great question. And so the question, in case you didn't hear it, was, would we have someone whose job is to monitor this proactively? And the answer to that is these cameras can be, God bless you, can be seen all on one screen. And so as needed, it would be up on a monitor for staff members to look. We wouldn't have someone there to watch it the entire time, but it would have recording capability. I believe the bid said 30 days, maybe 45 days.
You know what I mean, for 30 days of retention.
30 days. So we have the ability to go back and get that. Thank you for asking. Very nice.
If I can, it just, the way the high school currently uses it is that they've selected a number of cameras that they feel are, if they want to monitor. And the principal has them up on his computer. It's not teachers, it's not secretaries, it's just, it's just administration.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, number D.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. You're doing great. Thank you.
Okay, number D. Consideration of high school reference furniture quotes.
This is a big night tonight. I have to tie you after. I probably just six months of studying furniture, going to warehouses and checking out furniture, bringing staff and students. We haven't had some classrooms set up. We had three separate classrooms for teachers to try out the wares. And we have tonight the culmination of a bid that is again below our estimated amount of money that we got set aside for this part of the process. In the event that you are interested in seeing details, we have booklets that I've created that here, to see what kind of furniture we proposed in consultation with our community and our students and our staff. This also is inclusive of staff furniture, desks. We allowed our staff to take some time to identify the proper chairs and these sorts of things. Here, I'll put one over on this side too.
Dana, I think the other one's nice and actually...
Okay, very good. Very good. That's super. Thank you. So we include everything from PT classroom, OT classroom needs, as well as soft furniture for kids that have a collaboration commons area, and then our new desks that will allow for kids to continue to collaborate in their work. Chairs that would be comfortable at the same time durable. And we see this as really being a long-term investment. And so we're asking for the board's consideration of this, which has been so nicely vetted by our team. I want to extend a special note of gratitude to Sarah Straka for her work in helping us find our way through this.
Can you talk for just a minute about the fact that you're gonna have more than one vendor and why, just in case that question comes up at some point?
Thank you. We did go out and visit three vendors and then we pre-qualified them to make certain that these were vendors that have delivered on... that these were vendors that have delivered on time and done a good job of servicing both during and after the sale. And so we gave our want list based upon the feedback of those community members, staff members, and students. And then we put it out to bid to those three vendors. And so not any one vendor gave us the best price on the exact same item that we were looking for. So that's why we're proposing that we go with three different vendors, because we're maximizing the savings by purchasing in, with the vendor that gave us the best price for what we wanted. $570, $97,000, if I remember right. And we allocated for furniture and fixtures more than that. Let me just please hold. I can show it later. I'm mistaken, $547,000, according to the bottom right-hand corner of the spreadsheet.
Motion to approve the bids totaling $547,000.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The only other thing I want to say is I'm under the impression that staff spent considerable time selecting all these items. Is that accurate?
I don't think there's a thing that a staff member could say they did have an opportunity to weigh in on. In fact, what we did was we created Google Docs for staff just to kind of give us their feedback. Here's Classroom A that we've established. Tell us, what do you think? And students, take this survey. Tell us what you think about Chair A, Chair B, Chair C. It's been a very thorough process. Now, did every staff member agree with what they wanted? No. But we did take the feedback of people and develop this slate that we think is very representative of the needs of our community.
All in favor?
Aye.
Listen, comment.
Since we're beginning to ask questions about other topics.
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. My pleasure.
We're glad to hear it. Welcome.
So first of all, I want to say, Brian, my little guy loves all the support he gets at school. He does a lot of small groups and he always tells me about it. He loves his teachers, so thanks. Okay, so my two things, I'm newer to.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Melissa Harrigan.
Thank you.
I'm newer to the district because my oldest is only kindergarten. So still figuring all this out. But I was wondering if you guys have ever mentioned busing safety in the past for our little kids, especially for K kindergartners? My guy, in the fall, he got off on the wrong staff and walked about, I don't know, five or six blocks, maybe. He said he got off by the bowling alley and we're further down. And then waiting, as the bus driver said, her bus was empty. My heart kind of just sank. And I wasn't really sure where to go with that. She wasn't really quite sure where to go with it. She ended up regaling the school. They didn't have him, the bus didn't have him. So I was like, who has him? He ended up hiking around the corner about five, 10 minutes later, pretty shaken up. We tried to keep it cool and say, "Good job, you crossed streets on your own way to go, honey." But after that event, he really didn't want to ride the bus anymore. So we were riding the bus in the morning to school, but I pick up after school, just because that's what he feels comfortable with. So my question was, is there anything we can think of to do for 4K, 5Kers that can ensure they get home safe? I know that the 4Kers, they have to have an adult present in order to leave the bus. But could we extend that to 5Kers? My guy's young for his grade. So when he went into kindergarten, he had just turned five, like, you know, four months prior or whatever. So that would be a good question to ask. Otherwise, I don't know if any other districts do some kind of handoff, checkoff, like, okay, I have a kindergartner on my bus. I need to make sure that they get off at the right step. Something like that would be helpful to discuss. Otherwise, I love all the safety initiatives you guys have going on for school. And the other thing I wanted to ask you all was if you had some kind of system in place like Skyward. I know we have Bloom's for 4K. Where I'm from, they use Skyward, I believe it is. And they check in their students and mark them absent or tardy or whatever. And so the parents are allowed to log into this and they can see, oh, they were tardy for this class. Not quite sure if we have that here or not. And if not, is that something we could look into? Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we don't typically make comment and response, what I love to do is to be able to provide you, oh, you're doing great. First of all, our heart goes out to you and your little one. I'm sorry that you had that experience. I think that all of us have been in that situation as parents whereby we just take a beat and wonder what happened to our child. And I can't imagine the frightfulness, not only for you, but also for your child. So we're sorry for that. How about you and I connect offline? And I'd be happy to provide you with some responses to your very thoughtful questions.
Yeah. I think you guys do a great job with keeping them safe at school. So I just feel like this little step is maybe something I'm sure we could think about.
We can always do better, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine is the future attendance for the next coming meetings.
Mr. President, just a reminder, tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, we'll have a walkthrough with members of our Facility and Steering Committee members at the high school. And anyone who's here would like to join us.